Okay. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Meisner, are you ready? Everybody have their mics on? Okay. And welcome to December 16th edition of the regular city council meeting for Canyon City. Would you call or roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran, absent. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Here.
Councilmember Haques, absent. Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here. And we have Mr. Isaac Griffin come up for the invocation. Would you rise, please?
Join me in prayer. God, everything we have is yours. God, our positions, our resources are all yours. And we just ask, in Jesus' name, that you would give this body of people wisdom for decisions to be made, both small and large. And, God, that our eyes would look to you. God, we pray for just the health and growth of our community. And, God, that you give this group, and, God, those who care about this community, wisdom for what that looks like. God, that we would not define success and growth by man's standards, but by yours, and that we would care and see our neighbors. God bless this meeting, bless the communication in this meeting. We ask us all in Jesus' name. Amen.
(inaudible) Okay. We start off the meeting, if anyone would like to talk to city council, we have a form that you would fill out and bring up to our clerk, Cindy. And if it's an item that is on the agenda, we'd ask, or we'll call that, we'll call you up when that item comes up. But anything in general you would like to talk about with us, please feel free to fill it out, bring it up to Cindy, and then I'll call your name, and you can talk, and we give you three minutes. So, okay. Are there any announcements from council at this time, or statements? Ms. Gonzalez?
I just, I just want to say a thank you to our streets department. I've been watching them repave alleys, and they've done such a great job on getting them done quickly and efficiently, and they look really great. So, downtown alleys.
That's on the 400 block, is it?
400 block.
Yeah, I was watching that. And then, of course, this morning, I noticed that they had Main Street done, and they were picking up the extra snow and taking it off for a snowball battle, I think. No? Wouldn't that be fun?
I don't know anything about that.
So, yeah, they must have been up early. I was down there early, and they had already plowed up to the sidewalks and got it out in the middle of the street, and they were putting it in the dump truck and taking it out of there. So, anyone else?
What are they doing about those vehicles that are parking down there that are not supposed to be? Because that really is complicating that plowing. I say this morning, I don't know how they even did it without whacking one of those cars.
Yeah. I, you know, we continue to battle that on a, you know, when we have these events, these snow events. But, yeah, we put out the notices and have, you know, police enforcement go and notice. But, you know, at some point, we might have to, you know, tow if there's too many out there.
It's not a very, very hefty fine. It's only $5.
Okay.
So, maybe that's not...
I mean, we complain about the south side of Main Street getting towed, and then I drive down this morning, and, you know, they, they tow 15 feet of it because there's cars every three spaces. That shouldn't be there during that particular time. That's posted.
Right.
And that south side has got to be cleared off. I mean, it's another place.
Right. That might clear up when there's knowledge and we get the permitting process for the two parking lots that we leased. You think?
We can put out some more information and more public notices as well.
Or we can just stop her from snowing altogether. That'll solve the problem, won't it? Where's Ed Norton when you need him, right?
Right.
Okay. We have Wednesday night is the access control plan, which we'll be talking about again. And that will be here in this room at, is it 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
And then, is it Wednesday, or Tuesday or Wednesday, we have the contractors meeting here? Is it?
That's not for the 15th.
Yeah, that's next month.
January.
January 15th.
Oh, next month. Well, okay. I might not be able to attend that, then.
You're still welcome.
What?
You're still welcome.
Okay.
Oh, hee, hee, hee.
I'm not going anywhere. All right. Any other announcements we had? Nope?
Probably just a Merry Christmas to Canyon City. This is our last city council meeting until the new year, and we're happy to see so many awesome faces out in the audience. Thank you for being here.
Wow. Yeah, the downtown looks great with all the lights and everything. It's just, I've seen several pictures, and I've been down myself. It's just, it looks really great. So, shop downtown Canyon City, right? Okay. At this time, I'd like to invite Museum Director Lisa Stutz up to the microphone, and we're going to do a recognition for... Do you have a prepared speech for us? Lisa?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. The City of Canyon City and the Royal Gorge Regional Museum and History Center would like to formally recognize Loretta Bailey for her passionate dedication to public service in preserving and sharing the history of this community for the past 20 years. The countless hours she has worked to ensure that our region's history is not forgotten is truly awe-inspiring. Her skills as a storyteller, interviewer, and researcher are unparalleled. Her passion for our history and her curiosity about the past are especially evident in every project she tirelessly and proudly pursues at the museum. Loretta is also the most active, experienced, and successful volunteer recruiter the museum has ever had in our 91-year history. All current and former staff and volunteers at the museum enjoy working with her and are inspired by her infectious positive attitude. We are in awe of her knowledge of the community and are deeply appreciative of her gentle and polite nature. We hope she will continue to inspire and share her passion for history and this community for many more years to come. So, without further ado, it is my honor to present this plaque to Loretta Bailey for her outstanding volunteer service to Canyon City and to our museum.
First of, well, I'm short, so... First of all, this was a total, complete surprise. I was told that I was coming to this meeting because I was going to be appointed to the Canyon City Library Advisory Board.
And she's still on the short list.
And then Lisa met me in the hall and said, "They're not going to appoint you." And my jaw dropped. And so, I'm here for them to tell me I'm not appointed. But, anyway, I can, my family and my friends, that's this group, I didn't know they were coming. And so, I want to thank them, and Lisa, and the staff at the museum. But I was born and raised here, and it's a beautiful place, and I want to see it to stay that way. And I am proud to say I'm from Canyon City. So, thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. We'd like to have a picture with you. See, you know, that was part of the deal, too. Okay? So, why don't you come on up, and we'll come down there, okay?
Well, I'm short, so I wish I had the first row.
You're the center of attention.
Sorry. Sorry. Just to be jarring.
Our photos, the announcers.
For our families.
All right. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
you to the family that, of Ms. Bailey for letting us share with her, us, her with us, I'll get it right, all the hours it took away from your family. So, we really appreciate it. And to all the volunteers that we have, appreciate it. Okay. At this time, now, we'd like to act, ask the acting city administrator to review the agenda and the consent agenda.
Mayor and members of council, the 7A is approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting on December 2nd, the general government meeting on December 4th, and the special city council meetings on December 2nd, December 6th, and December 10th. 7B is to accept the resignation of Brandon Smith from the planning commission. 7C authorizes reappointment of Randy Smith and Elaine Green to the board of adjustments with terms ending on December 31st of 2022. 7D awards bid 5619 police annex remodel for 1145 Ohio. That's phase one to let construction, and the amount not to exceed $344,544.60. 7E awards bid 6119 debris body inlet assay to Williams Equipment of Henderson, Colorado, in an amount not to exceed $6,919.88. 7F authorized the mayor to sign an extension to the 2019 Colorado Jeep Tours contract for 2020. 7G authorized the mayor to execute an agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for tourism services in 2020 at a cost of $31,000. 7H authorized the mayor to sign a letter of support for Sol Vista Health. 7I approved the new grant writer position, which was budgeted for 2020. 7J receive and file the 2019 certificate of election official results. 7K is the monthly budget summary, and 7L is to receive and file list of bills.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections? Ms. Gonzalez?
I just had a couple of questions. On 7E, what is this truck used for? For the repairs on that truck?
7...
That's a vac truck.
Yeah, that's the vac truck.
It's the vacuum truck?
Yeah.
Okay. What I would prefer is that when they put these out, that they're not putting, like, ASSY would be assembly, putting it, not, not abbreviating any of the words, just because I think it clarifies a little bit better what we're doing. I didn't understand what it was about. So, it's the vacuum truck that we use on our streets?
It's our existing vac truck that we use for stormwatering the streets.
Okay.
Yep.
That makes so much sense now. And then, just on the election results, did we, is that in, in this one here?
Yes.
Eric Embry's name is spelled incorrectly.
That came directly from them.
Oh, it did?
In the I.
Oh, okay. All right. Uh-huh.
What'd you say? Name was spelled incorrectly.
Oh.
But it's not Cindy's fault.
No, yeah, okay.
So, don't blame her.
No, I was trying to figure out what you said.
No, Eric Embry, his name, I, I thought it was spelled E-M-B-R-Y, but there's an O in that one, so...
Mr. Meisner? You pushed your button.
Got distracted on the Os and As. It's already been corrected, but just for public purposes, the, the 12, two minutes that were included in our packets that could have been on the website, page three, the motion, it failed to recognize who made the motion in the second for Ardenance 35, series of 2019. And then on page five, I'm sure it wasn't done intentional, but she left my vote off.
Yeah, you didn't have a vote.
Which has been corrected. I've got a corrected copy here.
Thank you. Mr. Hammerick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the, my question is about our monthly budget summary, and, and my question is about online taxes. Are we, are we, and as may require Tammy, but are we, are we receiving a check from the state? The, you know, the, now, all the cities are supposed to be receiving tax monies from internet cells. And so, my question is, are we receiving any?
We, we are, and those internet companies actually have to file with our sales tax office, and they remit directly to the city.
And it's, and do you know which line that falls under that general, our sale and use taxes?
I believe it's lumped in with sale and use taxes.
Sale and use taxes.
Yeah.
And so, even, even, even with that extra money, we're, it seems like we have a shortfall there.
We, we're still trending up for the year.
Still trending up for the year.
Yeah, we're still above budget. And I think, you know, part of that is the, the December revenues won't be collecting, or you're not going to see those numbers until January.
Okay. And I also note that, that we've got, there's a couple of departments where our personnel services are almost maxed out at 100%, and we're only 83% of the way through the year.
Yeah.
Not, not to name any names, but the city clerk and in the public works division, and the, are we, you know, you know what's going on?
Yeah, so, some of those are, you know, we had a retirement earlier in the year, so PTO was cashed out, and they'll be reallocated at the end of the year. I think with the city clerk, some of those get allocated to the water department, I believe, so there, there's still some allocations that need to be taken place.
Allocations. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I did have a question about the online sales tax, and Tammy, maybe you can answer. Are you keeping a separate tally of where those online taxes are accumulating, or how much they're accumulating? So, I would be curious to know a difference for our budget in the year 2020.
All of the sales tax is reported in the general sales tax line item, but we can run a report that shows us taxes collected from businesses outside of the city limits, which, which can be an indication of what the online sales are. It might include a few other businesses that might be in Canyon City but deliver, basically in Fremont County but delivering to the city. That may not necessarily be online, but it would be fairly close.
Yeah, I'd be interested in 2020 to see that.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Ms. Gonzalez?
Just a couple more things. I didn't see this before. And while you're standing there, I'm, I'm going to ask you a question about, so on item L, detail of cash dispersments, this just caught my eye because it came up in the agenda for the Chamber of Commerce. The $2,818.20 that was paid to them in this, in this line item here, or this item here, is that a payment that we make to them every month for the, for what we approve to be payment, to be paid? Is that amount the same every month?
As part of the contract, as far as I know, it is the same amount every month, because the contract for 29, or for 2020 is payable monthly to them. We don't do it as a lump sum.
Okay. If we paid the same amount every month, we're paying $33,818.
So, when we approved the 2019 budget, or the contract for the Chamber of Commerce, we were a couple months into, into the year already. So, it was just, it's, it's basically prorated from that point forward.
Okay. And what line item in the budget is that taken from?
I don't, do you have that one?
I, I don't know the actual number. It's taken from department, from the economic development department's contract services.
So, it should be like 10, 410, 198?
305.
305, I think.
Is it there, or community funding? Because it used to come out of community funding.
I thought that was a different, that's a different amount.
Yeah, we, we changed that a couple years ago. It's coming out of the economic development contract services.
Mr. Meisner? Go ahead, Dolly. Go ahead.
Okay. Miss Sellers told me no threats, so don't roll your eyes at me.
What?
That was a joke, guys. That was a joke. So, um, oh, oh, here's what I want to say about the grant writer position. Caitlin and I attended a downtown econo, DCI, downtown Colorado, Inc., meeting, conference earlier this year. And one of the ideas that we were so fond of was a grant writer position for, for the cities. You know, certain cities had grant writing positions, and we saw that all these communities were getting grants. And so, I am thrilled to see this on our agenda. I'd kind of like to see how it's going to play out as we employ that position, but I'm excited to, to see this on our agenda. All right, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Yes, you can go.
I'll just add on, are you, about the grant writer?
No, go ahead.
Just for, for the public record's sake, is that the idea is getting our taxpayer money back into our community, as well as that grant writer, if, if he or she is proficient in their job, should be paying their own salary with the money they bring back into the city. And so, I am looking forward to seeing that, and seeing us get our fair share of our state money back into Canyon City.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Meisner?
Well, back to the grant thing, I think they'd have to generate more than their income. Otherwise, it's a wash.
Absolutely.
And then, and then Ryan, you had mentioned prorating on the chamber thing. I don't think it's prorated. It was just the total annual amount divided over 10 months versus 12 months.
Correct.
Okay. Did you?
11 months.
11.
11 months, yeah.
Yeah, so it wasn't prorated.
Okay.
Does Chris, do you want to say anything about the chamber?
You have, you have to come in the microphone, or I can't hear you.
You can't. I'll be sure.
I can't hear. That's a different story.
Hello.
Hi. If you have your name, just in case. Go ahead, for the record.
Oh, sure.
For the record.
Christina Webb, Director of the Canyon City Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
I've been with the chamber for 17 years, probably been up here for seven of that. Just wanted to let everyone know that we have a new home at 424 Main Street while I'm up here. Come and visit us. It's great location, so. Um, yeah, to answer Dolly's question, it's divided, that monthly allocation is divided on 11 months, so, on that. Hopefully, everyone got the statistics and all the information to go with that, or I'm sure Ryan gave you all that information. And if you have any other questions, I can answer them now.
Okay. Any questions? Chris?
No, I just wanted to tell her I wanted to pick on her.
Good. Thank you.
That's all.
Wow. Okay. Thank you, Chris. Any discussion on that? Corrections, anything? I know entertained someone's motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve the consent agenda and agenda as written.
Second?
Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Questions? Would you call or roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to invite the acting city administrator to comment on the administrator's report.
Mayor and members of council, just want to, you know, thank all the departments, especially the parks department that did a lot of work leading up for the holiday festivities, you know, putting up the new lights on Main Street and making sure Depot Park was ready to go for the tree lighting, as well as all the other departments, Denise Warren, Ivy Morris, who helped put together the annual Christmas party, and Cindy Foster Owens, who put together the board recognition dinner. It's a lot of work, and, you know, we've got great staff members that care a lot about the community, and, you know, they're out there, you know, making everything, making sure everything goes off without a hitch. Staff in the fire district met with representatives from Loaves and Fishes to discuss shelters and the homeless. You know, we've talked about many different options and different occupant loads and steps that need to be taken to ensure life safety standards. Loaves and Fishes is going to be moving forward with looking at additional shelter space and the guidelines that were laid out in that meeting, and potential future expansion for their sites. We've got work for the Urban Renewal Authority is underway, looking at, you know, the condition survey, and we look to bring that back to city council for a presentation in the beginning of February. And have some issues with the gateway monument signs. You know, the contract deadline was December 11th. Obviously, those gateway signs are not installed. We are seeking liquidated damages, and even though they've given us a deadline of February 14th, I believe with the liquidated damages, they should be prioritizing the, the work and hopefully getting it done sooner. And then, I've got some notes in here about the Recreation Aquatic Center, but since that's a new, another topic at the end of the agenda, I will skip that for now.
Okay. Any questions, Ryan? Mr. Meisner?
So, what do you know about the gateway sign fiasco? I hate to say that, but that's what it is, and I'm not blaming you. We're dealing with this, what, three years?
Yeah, and we're, we're, we're still trying to get some answers. We, we've been asking for pictures of the second sign that's supposed to be in fabrication and have not had any pictures of, of that. And, you know, Adam's here, he's, he's working on trying to get down to the bottom of what happened with this particular contractor.
Where are they being constructed?
Oh, Adam, can you remind me, is that Wisconsin, or was that the other vendor? Was Wisconsin?
No. So, you're not going to drive back there and look in the factory?
We could do a road trip, Adam.
Not to Wisconsin.
Yeah, we could go ice fishing.
All right.
I don't trust you two on the road.
I just have a request. The last two times we've been here for evening meetings, the light outside is burnt out, and...
Oh, yeah, you're right.
It's kind of treacherous out there in the dark, so if we could...
We will get that fixed.
Thank you.
In the parking lot?
Yes, yeah.
In the parking lot?
Yeah. Yeah, the street lamp out there is burnt out.
You didn't have your sunglasses on. It was actually dark.
I was lost in thought.
Yeah, we, we've had a couple issues with some of the timers, and we're trying to, we'll, we'll take a look at that one.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Ryan, I have a question about number three on the URA, and I was wondering, it's a pretty aggressive timeline. What's the likelihood that you think that we can actually get that accomplished by March?
It's a very aggressive timeline, and we're going to push it as, as hard as we can. I think, you know, the big variable is going to be the negotiating with the other taxing entity. entities, and, you know, likelihood of coming to an agreement in a timely fashion.
And who is going to be in the negotiations?
I'll be involved with that, and then, you know, I'll be asking Cory for some assistance with that as well.
And I think what makes the timing that much more aggressive is you have to have the Urban Renewal Authority formed in order to have the negotiations. You have to have the condition survey done in order to form the Urban Renewal Authority. So those first two tasks are running concurrently. We're creating the documents and the petition to create the Urban Renewal Authority. Rickery Cunningham is doing the condition survey. Those will effectively be brought to council together, and once those are approved, assuming they're approved, then we immediately start discussing things with the taxing entities.
And I just want to say that part of the need for that aggressive timeline is that we have a lot of development that's coming into Canyon City, just about ready to start. And if we're to be able to maximize the potential impact that the URA can have for Canyon City's future growth and development, we need to have that set up and ready to go when those, before those kick off. Plus, with the riverfront corridor, with the bites that we've been getting there, we also need to be prepared for that. So, it's a, it's a big priority for us to get going on that.
That is, and we'll move as quickly as we legally, you know, legally can within the process.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I forgot. I, I think what I was going to talk about was, we were talking about the gateway signs.
Oh.
It seems like it's just taken a long time, because I think we had somebody on board who was not happy with the signs that were chosen, and was trying, was encouraging a change. And that put us behind about a year. So, we've been waiting...
A long time.
A long time. And it's frustrating. So, but it's...
But one of them is on the way. I saw pictures.
Yeah.
One of them's in state, absolutely.
In state, okay.
Very nice.
In state?
That will be the, that will be the one on the east side of town, right?
That is the eastern gateway.
Yep.
And the directional signs, they're under production too, and on schedule. Is that right?
Right now, those are all in production and on schedule.
And so those are pretty important, too. Almost, to me, that's almost more important, to have those directional signs.
Yeah, and the directional signs, we're hoping to have all of those installed before the tourist season.
Great. Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Let's move on. Are these all public hearings, Cory, that I have to do, or?
No public hearings.
There's no public hearings. Okay, well said, public hearings. All right. Number nine, then. Consideration adoption by title only of Resolution 26, Series 2019, entitled, "A Resolution Leaving General Property Taxes for the Year 2019 to Help Defray the Costs of Government for the City of Canyon City, Colorado, for the 2020 Budget Year." Can we have our Acting Administrator, or someone from staff, comment on that?
Yeah, actually, we've got Tammy here from the Finance Department. We'll have her come up for any questions. This is, you know, the annual resolution certifying the mill levy, and it's, you know, looking at any tax abatements, and adjusting to make sure that we haven't lost too much money from that process.
Okay. Would you like to add to that, Tammy?
No, today was the deadline to certify to Fremont County, so that has actually been certified, and this resolution does state that we have already certified it.
Okay. Any questions?
How long do we need to do the resolution?
We need to approve it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number 26, Series of 2019, leaving the general property taxes for the year 2019.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hammack. Thank you. Any discussions on that motion?
I just got a quick question.
Mr. Meisner?
So it's at .04 now?
For the abatements, the, the regular mill...
2.88?
Yes.
What was it last year?
Our regular mill levy was still the 2.877, but the abated mill levy was higher. This year, we only have like 60-some dollars, a very minimal amount of abated property taxes, where the previous year, it was over a thousand. So that's where the difference is. So the actual total mill levy, including abatements, is less than what it is for...
This says 657,000, or 650 dollars?
For, for...
657.
The year before, it was, sorry about that. I missed a decimal there. It is 657. The previous year, for what we collected in 19, for tax year of 18, was in, was in the thousands for the abatements. So that mill levy did go down. So the overall mill levy will show a slight decrease.
Any questions? Okay, let's, we have the motion, the second, the discussion. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Number 10.
Well, that's...
No, that's vote.
Yeah.
Right? No, we set the mill levy.
What was the question?
The question is, who sets the mill levy?
Council sets the...
Council sets the mill levy.
Yeah, but you can't change it.
You, yeah, we've, we've got, we've got the base mill levy. This is just an adjustment based on abatements. So you can't change, you can't change the base.
You can't change the revenue.
Can't change the base.
Right.
Without vote.
Right. So...
Okay.
You can't increase the mill levy. You can't increase the mill levy without a vote of the people.
Dollars.
Right.
Right.
Well, no, the, the mill levy amount. You can't increase without a vote of the people. There are adjustments that are made within the authority given to the city for the mill levy. But you can't increase the mill levy from what was approved by the voters without another vote of the people.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to number 10. It says, this is a second reading, an adoption by title only of Ordinance 33, Series 2019, entitled, "In Ordnance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, Amending Various Sections of Title 21, Adding Definitions Concerning Residential, Non-Residential, and Mixed Use Structures, and Further Clarifying the Permit Use With or Within the Floodway." Would you care to comment on that, or would Mr. Lancaster comment? This is a second reading.
Yeah, again, this is a second reading. We've not received any public comments regarding this, and the changes, again, are to help make development within that area easier for developers.
Okay. Any questions of council? Then I would entertain a motion in a second. Ms. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 33, Series of 2019, which is a floodplain management regulations on Title 21.
A second reading.
Second.
A second reading.
Okay.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Ms. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a quick comment. I'm confirming what Ryan Stevens had said, that this regulation is an example of staff coming to us with reducing red tape and regulations, and making it easier, more affordable, and practical to build on the riverfront. And we are very happy to be able to make those adjustments and changes to increase development for Canyon City.
Okay. Ms. Meisner?
It may not necessarily make it less expensive. I mean, the regulation, we're easing up the regulation, but there are still some things in there that could be relatively expensive to meet those guidelines. For floodway?
Floodway.
Floodway. You know, waterproofing walls and what have you.
Oh, yeah, that's already there.
But it gives them the option. Whereas before, we said, no, you can't do that. Now we're saying, you want to do it, do it. But realizing that there's an expense associated with it.
Okay, and occupancy too. Type of occupancy too. And, okay. More discussion? In a second? A little more discussion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's move on to number 11. This is a second reading as well, an adoption by title only of Ordinance 34, Series 2019, entitled, "In Ordnance Rezoning Certain Real Property Within the City of Canyon City, Colorado." And again, this is a second reading. Would you like to comment, Mr. Administrator, Acting Administrator?
Again, it is a second reading. We've not received any additional public comments, and staff would ask council to approve on second reading.
Okay. Any questions? Then I would entertain a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Gonzalez?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 35, Series of 2019, by title on second reading.
34.
It's 34.
Patrick wrote it wrong. 34.
34.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hammack. Thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Mr. Meisner?
The ordinance says 35, or I'm looking at the wrong thing.
We're looking at...
11.
11. Point 11.
It's 34, on second reading.
There's, oh, there's two together.
Oh, there is two together.
Okay, I was sticking up for you, Dolly.
You were.
I'll go ahead and conduct the meeting.
Wait, what, what did he say?
I said, I'll go ahead and conduct the meeting. It's okay. I'm sorry.
This is my last one.
Oh, come on. With me, right? All right.
Last one, you're conducting two.
It is. Where are we? Must have been second, any discussion on that? We have had that. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. This, again, this is a second reading, and, second reading, adoption by title only of Ordinance 35, Series 2019, entitled, "In Ordnance of the City of Canyon City, Amending Chapter 16.04 of the Canyon City Municipal Code Concerning Annexation Policies and Procedures." Again, would you like to comment on that, Mr. Acting Administrator?
Actually, I believe our city attorney's going to comment.
Yeah, and I'm certainly able to answer any questions, but this is intended to bring the Canyon City Municipal Code into compliance with state law, and make it consistent with the Annexation Act, which is a matter of statewide concern that we have to follow.
Okay. Any questions on that? Ms. Smith?
Just probably more of a comment, but if I remember correctly, the municipal code from Canyon City went kind of above and beyond the state regulation, where it was more stringent and cumbersome. And this is another example of where staff and the attorney have come to council presenting us ways to be more development and business friendly. Again, we appreciate that, and encourage staff and Cory as well, that to keep it coming down the pipeline. We'd love to see more of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Oh, then we would have a motion in a second. Would you like to make that?
I messed up the last one.
You're not going to...
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hammack?
I move that we approve on second reading, Ordinance Number 35, Series of 2019, concerning annexation policies and procedures.
Okay. May I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any discussions on that motion? There we go. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on to number 13, Recreation/Aquatic Center Project. I would invite Acting City Administrator, Ms. Stevens, Mr. Stevens, to give us a report.
Yes, sir. The city, in partnership with the county and Recreation District, put out a request for proposal to analyze the next steps for building a Recreation and Aquatic Center. As part of that RFP, we asked the vendors to look at surveying the community to see what amenities would be wanted in the center, focus groups, illustrative graphics, and the community's tolerance for a tax increase to fund the project. After evaluating the difference, RFP responses that we received, staff is, and the partnership is recommending that we move forward with BRS, Barker-Rinker, CCAT, in the amount of $72,640. This includes, you know, $10,000 coming from the county, $20,000 coming from the REC District, it'd be $20,000 coming from the City of Canyon City. So that was $50,000 that made up the public portion of this funding. We have received a $20,000 donation from Bruce and Susie Bell. We've also received a couple of other donations from Nick Sartori of Sartori Sales, and Steve Caverman and his wife, for $1,000 each. That, that gives us the $72,000 for this project. And at this point, I would ask council if they have any questions. We do have Kyle Horn from the REC District here, and Karen Sartori from the REC Citizen Group is also here.
Would both of you like to approach the microphone? And we have some really tough questions for you.
Daniel's here, too.
Oh, Daniel, of course. How could I? Come on up. Come on down. Good.
Good. Thank you for having us today.
Sure. But one of the questions that I didn't see, or do I recall having a timeline, if this, all the money is available, when does the survey start, or the RFP start?
The work is going to kick off, according to the contract, the week of January 6th, and it will conclude in mid-April.
Mid-April, okay. Mr. Hammack?
Thank you. I don't have a question, but the, after I've finished, you're certainly welcome to comment also. But the, I've heard some concerns about this additional money going to the, to the REC Center, especially in light of our recent water rate increases, so that our water department is, starts getting closer to being fully funded. And I just wanted to say that, that, that this is not the commitment to build the Recreation Center. It is a commitment to study, to see what we can do. It is important to do this study, because if we don't do this study, we're not going to have a pool, essentially, is what, what I think our choice as council is. And so, you know, given, given that set of facts, I think that, I think that we absolutely have to chip in this extra $10,000. We do have to do the study. We have to give the pool a chance. If the voters, after all is said and done, turn, turn it down, that's, that's their choice. But, but our choice is $10,000 or no pool, essentially, is where we are.
And I would like to point out that, you know, part of the survey process, in the original feasibility study, we had a pretty wide range, from $25 million to $40 million to build a new Recreation Center. Part of this survey is about dialing that in and rightsizing the facility, so we, we know what we should be asking for if we do go to a tax question.
Thank you. Mr. Meisner?
I think, do they have those survey questions now? Are they, are they available yet?
No.
When will they be?
We will be talking with Barker-Rinker-CCAT about that, and the groups that they are working with.
I mean, I'd like to see what those questions are like.
And, I mean, it's, there will be members of council, I'm assuming, I know there are members of REC. There are members of Fremont County, there are members of the Recreation District that are part of this next part of the process. But you're also working with a company that has 10 successful projects in the state of Colorado alone, and a company that has hundreds of successful projects nationwide. They probably have an idea of the questions to ask before we ever actually sit down, because this is what they do for a living. So I think it would be important to see what it is that they have, and the advice that they have to offer. And one of the recommendations that BRS came forward with, which was outside of what we'd asked for in the RFP, was actually taking a couple of those focus groups, instead of doing them after the survey, doing them before the survey, so they could see, tease out if there were any additional questions that should go into the survey.
Well, that's my point, is, is, we're putting more money towards another survey, which, which we knew about months ago, and it creates complications for us on...
and it creates complications for us on council. And you're telling me just to trust the company, because they've been successful, but I would like to see what those questions are, in terms of what that survey involves.
It, going through focus groups, and REC district board, county commissioners, we're all partners in this together. Everybody will get a chance to see those options and weigh in on things, but, uh, my reference was more to the point of, this is a company that, that knows what they're doing and deals with, uh, communities similar to us. And that's why, there, there is a scientific approach to this, and it'd be interesting to see what they have to show, and, um, what we can learn from it. I know that in the hour and fifteen minutes we were with them, it was a very educational experience for everyone in the room. And, uh, I think that if you just spend fifteen minutes with them, you will realize that there's a lot we can learn, and there's also a lot of information we can share with them, that they very much appreciate. And there, there are several weeks at the end of January, which, which are dedicated to survey development, so, you know, pulling the right questions and making sure that we're, we're looking at the right things. Uh, so, I, I don't know that you can say that there, you know, these are the exact questions that are going to be asked right now. It's, there's, there's a process to that, and as, uh, Kyle mentioned, uh, you know, it's, you know, going to take input from all parties.
Ms. Smith?
Oh, and I just want to point out that the previous study we did, it was a feasibility study, and the one we're doing now is a market study. So those are two different types of studies. We're not doing a repeat of the same thing. And the market study really is the main thing, you know, one of the parts, besides creating illustratives that we can take to the community for an election, is creating a product that Canyon City residents are going to feel comfortable and have a great likelihood of voting yes for. And that's a really important part in other communities. This was key to them getting their recreation centers passed. And I also wanted to point out and say thank you to those who helped fill in the gap for the funding that was significant, donations that were given by the community. And I find that really also encouraging, that it shows that we do have support in this community, that people are willing to put up some pretty big numbers to see this go through already. And I'm grateful for that. And to you, and to you folks down there who helped solicit those funds, thank you. Um, I do have some questions for you. Um, you have, I know that you've been getting out to the community and going to different groups, and I was wondering, how has that been going for you? Can you give us kind of a little peek into that?
Absolutely. I was going to speak to that just a bit, too, because I know, uh, Mr. Meisner, last time we were here was quite a while ago, and one thing that I believe you suggested was, um, keeping track as we go along, um, to different community groups, and, um, really taking their questions, keeping track of those, an informal survey, if you will, and so I've been doing that. I have visited several community groups, and, um, I've been really pleased, uh, with the reception of the idea, the excitement, and, uh, a lot of the brainstorming that's come with that. Several groups have said they want to, um, put out a public statement of support. Several groups have brainstormed, how can we help through some sort of grants on our end, once we get it going? I'm actually looking to get into those groups who may be more, um, against the idea, uh, because most of the groups who I've been to have been ninety-five percent, I mean, just very much on board. It's hard to find someone in the room who's not excited about this possibility. I believe that Mr. Stevens, um, and I, I gave him permission to share a document where I've been tracking those comments and questions, so you're welcome to look at those specifically as well. I'll continue to update that. And, parallel to this study, uh, we're going to continue to visit different community groups, just because, um, I really feel like in that small, um, environment, it, it gets real personal as far as questions and, um, really good ideas shared. And hopefully, some of those questions will be considered, uh, by the survey committee as well, as, as far as, you know, at least looking at those, so that the whole community could be a bit, a part of that.
Awesome. Um, now, this study, the market study, is going to go until mid-April. What do you anticipate doing during that time as a citizens committee group? Because I know November 2020 is coming up really fast, and we still have to be working towards the election.
Absolutely. Um, as much as, um, we've talked about kicking off a capital campaign, I've been a little bit questionable about, do we start that after this concludes, or do we go ahead and get started with it, right? Um, that, that's something that we're interested in exploring, as well as continued visits to community groups. Um, we've also, um, been talking to several other experts and, uh, community members who've been interested in partnering, and coming up with different ideas as well. So, I think just, we're not going to stop the process and wait for these results. We're going to continue to try to gain traction in the community and get the word out as well. Understanding that we may not get past that point, um, and really hoping that, um, it, the survey turns up, that this is, um, a really good thing to move forward on.
Okay. My next question is for you, Kyle. I've only been, um, keeping updated through, I guess, the grapevine and the newspaper about the future of the Iguabon Pool.
Yes.
There's, there's been a lot of conversations around that, and I was wondering, what, what is the future as of now? And what could that impact be on a future community rec center?
I'll make this a very Cliff Notes version, because really, we could be here for a long time. Basically, what we have done is, the board has approved a budget in 2020, as if the pool were open. That does not mean that we are going to open the pool. That just means that we have planned for a, if there is an opportunity financially that presents itself, um, from within the community or some outside resources, we could do it. We have a lot of repairs that need to happen in the mechanical room. The interesting thing is, within the mechanical room, that's just the tip of the iceberg. Those are actually the smaller numbers of repairs that are needed, then there are other things to bring the pool up to current programming standards that need to be done, that get into the significant higher range, somewhere upwards of five hundred thousand to a million. That includes the bathhouse, the liners, zero entry, multiple bodies of water, uh, things change. So, the question is, can we open the pool this year? I can't guarantee, one way or other, that we can or we can't. Uh, we do have a drop dead date, uh, from at least one company, of February 1st, to notify them in order to do the mechanical room repairs. Without those repairs, it's pretty simple. The pool doesn't open. And there are four things that we are looking at, and that is, uh, a pair of sand filters, uh, a boiler, a pump, and then the last one would be replumbing. Uh, we also have to be careful of replumbing, because we have to make sure that the size of the piping that we're replumbing matches the piping that is under the pool, which also, that means technically, you're not getting up to some of the recommendations that they would like to get you to, because we can't change out the pipes under the pool. If we do, you might as well just wipe the pool out and start over. So, there are a lot of things that we have to consider, and a lot of things that we have to, um, do with the Iguabon Pool. Again, I go back to the site audit that was conducted by TerraCon, and that was, the pool has outlived its useful life. We're there. Um, you know, the analogy's been made, you can't kick the can down the road anymore, because you're out of road. Well, we're also out of a can. It's, um, I, I don't know any nice way to put it. It's just, it is what it is. And by February 1st, we have to make a decision. Um, is the pool open or is it closed? And that is, from what it looks like, the drop dead date. So our job between now and then is to get as much information as we can and figure out what we're going to do. I would love to sit here and guarantee that we can open up a pool. I can't do it.
So I, I have another question along those lines. If, part of the conversations I've heard is that, and I don't know if this is true or not, but that a lot, as you've been going out to focus groups, that a lot would like to see the outdoor pool stay open and have a rec center? Is that been a part of the conversation, and will that be part of this market study, and is that even feasible?
That, that is a part of the conversation, is, did we write that into the market study? No. Uh, the study was completely for an aquatics and recreation center. If we want to redo the pool, that is going to be essentially, um, you look at rifle with theirs, and that's an apples-to-apples comparison. That was a six million dollar project, and then an additional two million dollars for financing. So an eight million dollar, uh, an eight million dollar proposal to redo their pool. I don't know if you could say hypothetically, if this community in one shot could do eight million dollars for a pool, outdoors, seasonal, and then thirty million dollars for a recreation center. I don't know if that's a realistic ask. I'm not saying there isn't. I'm not saying that there is. I just don't know where that is going to go. There's a lot of hard questions to ask, but at this time, and at this economic climate, is it fair to ask for both? We may have to choose at this point which direction we want to go as a community, and essentially pick a lane and go for it. But I don't know if we, the opportunity to pick two lanes will be there.
Thank you.
If I could just speak to that, because I've also heard that comment, and, um, for most of the people, it's not specifically about the area of town. It's really the allure of an outdoor pool, and the nostalgia of as children playing around on the outdoor pool. Some of the solutions, and I don't know it's a solution, because we're so far off from that final, um, vision, but I have seen indoor pools that have the ability to, um, open up on one side, or open up, um, to make it have that indoor/outdoor feel, to where you're still getting that twelve-month use, usage time, and, uh, of course, then attracting so many more community members that can use it in two and a half months, um, on good weather days when it's working. Uh, so I would love to explore that idea. That may be one way of meeting, uh, kind of that need, having that outdoor patio space, or, or, you know, room for expansion in the future, but, um, I've seen some pretty cool models of just that, and, and they really do meet both of those needs.
Thank you.
Uh, we already talked about it. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Meisner? Mr. Meisner?
Couple of comment. Couple of comments or questions. I, I would still suggest that you identify the groups that are not supporting you, and those are the people that you concentrate on. Because obviously, the people that are supporting you are going to support you, but part of the complication is those groups that are not in favor of that. Uh, the other thing that anybody that's listening, and you people need to be educated on, is the increases that we've had in water rates, the increases that we've had in, in, um, stormwater rates. Those are completely independent enterprise funds. Those monies cannot be used for anything other than stormwater and water. So, feel free to communicate that. When people talk about the increase in water rates, that has to be used for water. That's it. The increase in storm rates has to be used for stormwater. You can't use it for anything else. So, I realize it's an expense increase in people's budgets, but, uh, we need to be careful in terms of the fact we're, you know, we're increasing over here and we're taking over here, because we're, they're completely different funds that we're dealing with. I was under the impression from the article that I read in the media, is, is that the board had approved the budget, the, for the repairs, and in particular, because there was a determination that the leak that we had suspected to be major wasn't major.
Correct. So, the first one, the information in the paper was partially true, but it, just because you budgeted for it, does not mean that you're going to expend that money. What we did was, we budgeted the pool in, knowing that if we did receive financial backing, we now do not have to amend the budget. So we did that to prevent us ourselves from amending the budget. That doesn't mean we are going to spend the money. And multiple board members are already on record at the, at the November budget meeting, where they said they were not going to vote to expend twenty-six to thirty percent of Recreation District reserves to go to this for the pool. So that tells you right there that we have to find other revenue sources in order to open. So did we budget for it? Yes. Are we going to do it? That is yet to be determined. We did budget for operations. We budgeted as if the pool was going to open. We did that in case we got some sort of windfall. It basically bought the board and district staff more time to try to track a few things down, possibly come up with some money, citizens groups to come up with some options, and maybe find a solution to keeping the pool open. It just gave them an option and gave us a little bit more time to try to address the issue. But if worst-case scenario happens, then there's a chance that that money will not get expended at all, and the pool will not open. As, and then the second part, I'm sorry, was on... You said there were two things. One I addressed right off the bat. What was the second?
Ah, who knows?
It was in the, it was, you, you, you mentioned something about the newspaper article.
Oh, well, the other one was the fact that we originally had this black cloud, that the leak, we didn't know what it was.
Okay, so...
It could be catastrophic, and it, and it was not.
Okay, so we were able to investigate, and we worked, uh, we were able to work with leak detection companies. So there were two issues that happened. One, there were four faulty valves. And the board has this, the REC, the REC district board now has this information, because we got it the day after the board meeting. So there were four valves that were the issue. We were able to get those valves addressed, and we're getting them solved. They're primarily in the irrigation. We did lose somewhere close to two-hundred thousand gallons there. Does not account for the other two-hundred fifty to three-hundred thousand gallons. We did figure out where that came from. There was a leak on our side of the meter, right at where the city meets off of 11th Street. Okay? Because our valve is actually on 11th Street that comes in, um, on the house on the other side. The leak was just on the city side of the meter. We had a lot of water flowing down the street. We were able to get that repaired. And we appreciate the city's help on that, but of course, we had to pay for the water. So, that's where we figured out that that is where that issue occurred. We did test the pipes from the street all the way into the, into the maintenance room, and then we tested a couple of other areas, as well, the mechanical room. The pipes were holding. The pipes were doing fine. So we believe the pipes themselves, at this time, are okay in the pool. Irrigation system's another story, but that is our fix. We will handle that as quickly as we can and get that done right. But the good news is, we do know where we're at leak-wise. Does that mean the, the pipes are still going to be able to maintain? Let's say we did get the mechanical room fix going, and we don't put enough pressure on those pipes to where they don't pop a leak? Yeah, we'll see. They're fifty-three, fifty-four-year-old pipes. We'll see where they go. But, uh, but, but we did get some good news there.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I do have a question. Um, this survey company that you are looking at, um, hiring, do you happen to know their, um, success rate?
You, you mean, not just the survey, the whole company, BRS?
Well, no. What is, I mean, if, if we were to do a survey, what is their success rate in having, um, the community, um, respond back to their survey?
So, so Ryan can answer maybe the margin of error. Yeah, so when we put out the, uh, RFP, we were looking for a ninety-five percent confidence rate with a five percent margin of error. Uh, BRS, uh, came back with, uh, three different options, four, five, and six percent margins of error. Uh, what we're asking council to approve tonight is actually a four percent margin of error. So, that's roughly six hundred survey responses, um, and they, they'll send out, uh, you know, they, they, they have a formula that they use to, you know, determine how many they need to send out. Uh, that includes sending out pre-notifications to let people know that the surveys are coming, and then, if needed, at the end, uh, follow-up phone calls to make sure people complete the surveys.
And are these all Fremont, is it Fremont County-wide, or is it...
So, it's, uh, they'll be looking at both within the city boundaries and within the REC district boundaries.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and, you know, using, you know, logic, logic surveys, and I don't want to get too, too into the weeds, but, uh, you know, they'll, they'll use some logic, uh, branching within the surveys themselves, uh, to determine, you know, if somebody says that they live in Fremont County, or within the REC district, but don't live within the city limits, uh, they'll get a, a couple of different questions, um, based more on mill levy versus those who live in the city limits. They'll, they'll get the mill levy question and a sales tax question.
Okay. Well, the reason I asked that question is because we've done surveys for the city, and our response rate isn't that great.
Right.
But, um, and we also hired a professional company to do it, but I, I know that we had developed a lot of our own questions, and they may not have been as effective. So I think that's why we're concerned about seeing some of these questions and having some input, um, in, in what comes back. So, good. That's good to know. Thank you.
I do think it's, uh, too bad that we can't go out to the county a little bit further, because that is a piece of feedback that I'm getting quite often, is, really want to see this be a county-wide initiative, um, with it being ten, you know, the, the proposed possible property, ten minutes from Florence High School. I've had, um, groups say, you know, Fremont RE2 kids, and senior citizens deserve this as much as, you know, Fremont RE1 citizens, and I absolutely agree, and it's not any further than someone who lives on the west side of town than from Penrose or Florence. And, and that's a, why it's another, another reason it's a great spot. But a lot of feedback saying, um, would really like this to be a county-wide vote, and I don't know how that goes, and clearly, they're not being surveyed all the way out into the county, but, um, I think that's an area that we really... But, um, I think that's an area that we really need to continue to explore, if possible.
Well, it's no different when we do our, our surveys, they only go, go out to city
Right.
city, um, residents, even though we have Fremont County residents that use our community, so...
And the way that bound, I live right behind Walmart, and I'm in the county, you know? And so the boundaries are just goofy here, too, you know?
Okay. Now, Ms. Smith, I'd cut Mr. Meisner off, as you see to some of your time, so he can ask one of you. Okay, thank you. I just did.
Uh, I'll try to make it quick. Uh, you said the leak was on the city side of the valve?
No, I'm sorry, I misspoke, I'm sorry. It's on the REC District side.
Right, okay.
It was on the REC District side of the meter, so it was our water bill to pay.
Well, there, isn't there typically a policy relative to major leaks where the city offers discounted rate on that leakage? Say yes, because we've done it in the past.
I would say yes, but I'd need to confirm the actual policy.
I mean, there's, there's a history there of leaks, where the city steps forward and saying, hey, there's a leak that it's crazy to bill a customer for water they didn't technically use, because it was a leak.
Well, it's also when we went to month-to-month billing, so it could be detected faster.
Well, that's a theory. Uh, the second time, I, I think you and I were in a meeting somewhere, where I said, you at least need to approach the city about assisting. Do you recall any of that? It was a brief comment?
I do, I believe that was probably in March or April, right here in this room, at a journal. I've, you know, I, I just asked briefly, just to help me, what, what the tolerance level might be, and I understand your budget's tight, our budget's tight, but no, I never did do anything formal, no, sir.
I realize everybody's budget's tight, but there's a substantial number of city residents that utilize that pool. And I realize they're paying, uh, a recreational fee, or whatever you call that tax you're doing.
It's a mill levy.
Mill levy. I also think at some degree, versus losing the pool, uh, it makes some sense for the city to try to step up and help.
Okay, so you guys want to do a hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars?
Could be, but I, I don't know, but if you don't talk about it, then you don't know.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Well, that kind of leads into my comment, is that I have a reluctance, even for this, if there's private, you know, if you're getting funding from someone else, I'd rather see that funding go towards a permanent solution and not a Band-Aid. And so that's kind of where I'm at, even if you're gonna go solicit funds for the Iqabon Pool, I kind of prefer it to go towards something that was permanent.
And in discussing grant opportunities, everything else, uh, the problem with the pool is that you're dealing with a fifty-thril facility, and it's, as she put it, you're putting a Band-Aid on. This is, this is the first problem, and there are
Right.
five or six larger Band-Aids that need to get addressed, that once you get into all of them, you all of a sudden total up to six million dollars.
It's not near as bad as our streets or our stormwater problem.
I, I would, I would not disagree with you.
It's mild. But I'm just telling you that, that if you ask people, I'm gonna say this, whether we fund the trail going up the peak, or we've helped fund the pool, I think most people would tell you that city residents, that they would rather utilize that pool than building a trail at the side of the peak.
Do you mean Iqabon or a future community rec center?
I'm talking about Iqabon. Because we potentially are to a point where the Iqabon could close this summer, or not open. Right?
Uh, yes.
That's all I'm saying.
I think, though, too, if, if it gets, um, completely fixed, even for this summer, we're gonna be right back here potentially in a year from now, right?
I don't disagree.
With, again, a hundred-and-forty thousand sunk in, and private donors going, wait, I just put in a lot of money. As a taxpayer, I mean, I know I'm a little biased, because of the project, obviously, but, um, I would, I wouldn't feel good about fixing up something that's really, doesn't have the sustainability.
Then I withdraw my comment, and they can work on their own, thank you.
Okay, are we gonna look for a motion on this?
Yeah, let's do a motion.
Let's do, well, I would ask then for a motion of some sort, so someone, please, offer it.
Mayor?
Ms. Gonzalez?
Wait, what is this? I don't have any paper. I don't have a...
I'm gonna make a motion for this.
What is the motion?
This is also Caitlin's last, this is your last chance, Caitlin, to do a motion.
Yeah, Caitlin, make a motion. Well, I don't have anything in my binder that talks about this. So, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance thirty-six? Uh, this is not an ordinance.
Ryan's telling you no.
It's just the thirty, your twenty thousand.
The city council... Okay, this is so much better. That the city council approved moving forward with BRS to conduct a next steps analysis for the Recreation Aquatic Center project.
I'd like to see a dollar amount attached to that.
There is seven... Seven, at, at the rate of seventy-two thousand, six-hundred-and-forty dollars, uh, plus or minus four percent margin of error.
That's, that's the total amount.
No, not the, okay, that's, that is with the total.
What we're funding is twenty thousand.
We're funding twenty thousand, right?
Twenty thousand.
That's what I want to hear.
Why did I sign up for this? You shouldn't have made the motion, Jim. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, please make...
Not Mr. Meisner. I make a motion that the city council approve, moving forward with BRS to conduct a next steps analysis for the Recreation Aquatic Center project at twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Second, thank you. Caitlin? Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye, enthusiastic aye, yes, let's get moving.
Yes, by all means. I don't get to vote, but thank you for coming forward and your perseverance in this, and, uh, I'll be trying to find a new set of swimming trunks shortly. Not a pleasant thought, I know. All right. Then I would then ask for someone to make a motion to adjourn to executive session. Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council have, uh, move, hold an executive session to determine positions relative to matters which may be subject to negotiations, to develop strategy for negotiations, and or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six, dash four-oh-two, four E.
Okay. Motion's been made, you'll have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hamrick? Uh, any discussion on that motion? Hall in favor? I mean, call a roll, please, I'm sorry, call a roll, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Okay, that is seven-seventeen, and we are adjourning for that meeting, we'll be upstairs.